It is seven o'clock. I will call to order this regular meeting of the Waco ISD Board of Trustees. I want to welcome all of you who are here this evening and let you know that everything we are going to vote upon or discuss this evening is in post in accordance with state law. I also want you to know that the Board's purpose is to set goals, listen to reports of the Superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. We are not here to make management decisions or solve problems of individuals. As management, it's the responsibility of the Superintendent and her staff. If you have a cellphone with you this evening, we would ask that you either turn it off or put it on silent at this time. And lastly, I can't tell you how much we appreciate your interest and your support of the Waco Public Schools, not only those of you here joining us this evening, but those of you watching at home on Channel 17. We really appreciate the support we have out in the community. And we'll now move on to Item Four and ask that you join us as we pause for a moment of silence for prayer, contemplation, reflection, or meditation. Thank you. We'll now move on to Item Five, Pledge of Allegiance. Dr. Kane?
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, we are doing something special in our Pledge of Allegiance presentation at the request of Julie Sapal, a Kendrick Elementary Principal and the Mayor of South Waco. The students leading the pledge tonight include both current and former Kendrick students. Please welcome the Zuniga family: Alba, Nadia, Christian, Emmanuel, and Ashley.
(Inaudible)
Great job. Thank you, students. And Board members, please join me and Brother Davis for tonight's presentation.
We begin the special recognition portion of this meeting by saying thank you to the Zuniga family for leading the Pledge of Allegiance. From the youngest, a second grader, to the oldest, a junior at Tarleton State, all five students have their roots firmly planted at Kendrick Elementary School where Julie Sapal is the principal. Second grader, Ashley Zuniga. Ashley is described as a quiet student, but she loves to dance. The best thing she likes about school is science and playing on the playground. When she grows up, Ashley wants to be a cheerleader. Third grader, Emmanuel Zuniga, according to Ms. Sapal, Emmanuel is an excellent student who loves school. In fact, he has never missed a day of school. And that dates back to when he was in pre-kindergarten. Emmanuel enjoys coming to school each day because of great friends and a super teacher. When he grows up, he wants to be a teacher or a soccer player. Sophomore Christian Zuniga is a product of Kendrick Elementary also. Christian is now a proud University Trojan. A member of the Trojan soccer team, Christian finally remembers his days at Kendrick. Christian has a goal of becoming a mechanical engineer. The 2013 university graduate Nadia Zuniga, she first started school at Kendrick many years ago, and she knew no English. But because of a strong work ethic instilled by her parents, Nadia today is a student at McLennan Community College. She is studying to become a history teacher. So make certain she gets an application and she gets to the last person down there. Like her sister Nadia, Alba spoke only Spanish when she started school at Kendrick. Today, having earned her associate's degree from MCC, Alba is a junior at Tarleton State University where she is studying to become a teacher. She currently tutors at Kendrick. Alba still remembers her former principal's smile when she walked through the doors of Kendrick many years ago, and, she adds, Ms. Sapal hasn't aged a bit. Thanks again to the Zuniga family for leading the Pledge of Allegiance. Enjoy your books that have been provided by Barnes &amp; Noble Booksellers, a proud adoptive school partner of Waco ISD. It might be a surprise to some, but Waco ISD serves more than 1,000 students who are classified as homeless. However, unlike some districts who struggle to see their homeless students succeed in school, not so in Waco ISD. In fact, the graduation among our homeless students is 90 percent. One of the reasons behind our success is a very special person named Cheryl Poole. A social worker and the district's homeless outreach liaison, Cheryl has a deep passion to serve the homeless in our community, particularly homeless students. And we aren't the only ones who realize what a treasure we have in Cheryl. Earlier this month, Cheryl received a special award from the Texas Homeless Network. The Texas Homeless Network is a nonprofit organization whose goal is to help Texas communities prevent and end homelessness. Cheryl was honored for her work at serving the Waco ISD homeless population, as well as her active role on the Heart of Texas Homeless Coalition. Congratulations, Cheryl Poole, and keep up the great work. As school leaders, principals are entrusted with our most valuable resource, our next generation of leaders. To accentuate the important role of principals, Governor Rick Perry has proclaimed October 2014 as Principals Month in the state of Texas. Perry notes that principals are much more than just caretakers of their schools. Principals are expected to be educational leaders, disciplinarians, community builders, budget analysts, and much more. Principals set the academic tone for their schools and work collaboratively with teachers to set performance objectives and to maintain high standards. Tonight, we would like to recognize the hard work of our principals and to say thank you for the many hours you work each and every day to ensure the success of our students. Would all of the principals who are here tonight, please come forward and be recognized and greeted by the Board.
Come on, guys.
One principal who just zoomed by, I would like to focus a little bit of attention. I'd like to formally introduce the new principal at Hillcrest PDS, Dr. Amy Matthews Perez. Dr. Perez is no stranger to Waco. In fact, she's a proud product of Waco ISD, having graduated from Jefferson Moore High School in 1985. Dr. Perez started her now 23-year career at Waco ISD, but she most recently worked at Gregory Lee Portland ISD as the Director of Special Ed. She received her undergraduate degree from the University of North Texas, her master's degree from Baylor University, and her doctorate in educational leadership from Texas A&amp;M at Corpus Christi. In her leisure time, Amy spends, enjoys spending time with her family and her husband Roger, who is also known as Prince Charming. So, Dr. Perez, welcome.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the kind words, but even more than that, I appreciate the opportunity to return to my alma mater and serve Waco ISD, and I am truly honored to be a member of the Hillcrest PDS family. So, thank you for the opportunity to positively impact the lives of others, as mine was, as a product of Waco ISD. So, thank you very much.
Waco ISD is very fortunate to have more than 200 adoptive school partners volunteering on campuses throughout the district. Tonight, we recognize our Partners of the Month for October: Extra Co. Events Center, Crestview Elementary, and the T-Bone Reading Roundup Challenge. This reading program at Crestview required students to keep a log of all the books they read during the summer. As a reward for their hard work, the students received Heart of Texas Fair general admission tickets, carnival armbands, and fun passes. In only its first year, more than 50 students participated, collectively reading more than 1,100 books. Crestview Elementary is excited to watch this program grow next year. In Commons Bank, Kendrick Elementary, and Pigs Will Be Pigs. In Commons Bank volunteers visited Kendrick Monday morning during September reading and working, during September, reading and working with the first graders. They began by reading the book, Pigs Will Be Pigs, and followed that by giving students their very own piggy bank to help them start a savings account. The volunteers ended the month by teaching the first graders how to count money. In Commons Bank wants to help Kendrick students achieve their academic goals and also be financially smart. Thank you, In Commons Bank. Western Heights Baptist Church, Parkdale Elementary, and getting a jump on the year. Western Heights Baptist Church jumped into action in August by presenting Parkdale with a $200 gift card to purchase backpacks and supplies. Then in September, the church held a prayer walk for their school and will continue to pray for students and staff members throughout the year. Western Heights also started a weekly mentor and tutoring program. Besides all of this, the church manned three booths at the Parkdale Family Festival last week. The folks at Western Heights Baptist Church are considered superheroes at Parkdale Elementary. Thank you again to all of our Waco ISD Adoptive School Partners of the Month for October.
Thank you, Dr. Kane. We will move on to Item Seven. Audience forgets. My understanding, no one signed up this evening, Sandra. Then we'll move on to Item Eight, the Consent Agenda. And I've been asked to pull Item K, renovations, remodeling, repairs, maintenance, and technology projects. Is there anything else anyone needs pulled from the consent agenda?
Sir, I don't want them pulled, but I do want you to know that it is a living document, and I intend to put it back on the November agenda so we can continue to elaborate and work on it. But I do not want it pulled.
Okay. Is there anything else that does need to be pulled? All right. Then I will entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda with the exception of Item K. So move. Thank you, Ms. Manning. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Dupuy. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed. Motion carries. We'll now move on to Item K, which is the major renovation, remodeling, repair, maintenance, and technology projects for the coming year. Ms. Davis? My recollection is that there were some questions last week, kind of on the prioritization, and some of the folks who put together the list weren't here to answer some of those questions. Is that right? Are they here this evening?
Yes, I believe they are. Mr. Gomez and his staff are here.
Okay. Ms. Manning, I think you were one of the ones that asked for it to be pulled. Do you want to go first?
No. Basically, what I wanted was a little bit more clarification on what we're going to do. And yes, in the timeframe, when are we going to get some of these projects done?
It's my understanding that the projects will be done before the end of the year, Mr. Manning. I understand that there are some projects that we have in here that might cause us to go a little bit further, but we've got projects like the tennis and roofing. We've got the parking lot that are already in the agenda, the track and, the track replacements. We can get those done fairly quickly. In fact, the track replacements, we can, we're thinking we can get them done before track season starts.
That's what Coach Tusa is very much committed to.
Well, are those going to be bids?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
You will see all of these come back as...
So, we're going to bid this and all of it and have it done before the end of the year?
Be careful. Not all. I mean, the things that are in-house and job order contract won't necessarily come back.
Right.
Well, we will need to bring all of those back for you all to approve a construction delivery method.
Okay. Even the in-house projects, then, you'll want us to approve as a delivery method?
The, the in-house projects, the reason we put them in as in-house projects is because we're thinking that our staff can go ahead and do a lot of the work to be able to get our, those bits down to a point where we can better afford them. We're trying to save the district as much money by using our people to be able to get in there and do as much work as possible. Now, whatever we can't do, because we can't do it in a, in a fashion that's quick enough to be able to get the schools, like maybe Mountain View painted quickly, we're going to go ahead and JOC those jobs. But Provident Heights, it is on our agenda to fix this year, so we want to make sure that we get that with our staff over there probably by the middle of November.
We're currently working on Provident Heights for now.
Okay.
Next year. We're trying to get the exterior paint projects started.
I'm sorry. This is Kevin. This is our maintenance of, coordinator of maintenance.
So, on our paint projects, we're trying to get everything going that we can on the exteriors now with our own forces. Try to get going as much as we can. I think we've designated Mountain View will probably be a JOC contract. The others, we're going to try to do as much of those as we can in-house.
Other questions? Please, Mr. Dupuy.
Well, I think we're to start. I guess I'm trying to figure out, and I should have asked a lot of these questions last week, and I'm not, well, I'm not sure there's anybody there really to answer them, but where did this list come from? I'm curious to know how, I'm really not intimate enough at all with, I guess, really, the physical condition of most of these properties where I could make some sort of judgment from my perspective, say, yeah, man, that needs doing. Sure does. I don't have any idea. So, I'm wondering what the process, do we have the individual campus principals? Go to them. What, what would you like to see happen?
Okay.
You're going to answer?
Yes, I want to start.
Okay.
Before we consolidated, we really didn't have the money to really take care of all the campuses that we had. The first year we consolidated, we really spent the savings on getting the schools that we consolidated to, the extra classrooms, whatever we needed. So, there wasn't a lot of saving. The next year...
Here's, it doesn't surprise me that we need a lot of work. That's not, I've got that part. And I understand that money's always tight, and then, for various reasons, we do have more money available now to do some of this stuff.
Right. Every year, we have what we call a special request. When we put the budget out, with a special request, borders on a billion-dollar list. I mean, the principal send in, I'd like this done, I'd like that done. And, and we, even though we may not can do it all, we still make note. And Ms. Davis, I don't know what her record-keeping system is.
So typically annually, we're getting feedback from campus managers that this is what...
And if we don't fund it, we don't necessarily throw it away. We just kind of keep a running list. Now, some things we don't necessarily think rise to the need of something that has to be done in the district, and that's kind of judgment between Ms. Davis and I, that that, that might be more of a nice-to-have than a have-to-have. We're on a have-to-have list, not a nice-to-have list. So, by now, we had quite a have-to-have, in our opinion, a have-to-have list. And so, whenever we looked at the, you know, any excess money, I don't think you ever have excess money, but if we had some wiggle room, we had a little bit of wiggle room, in my opinion, that we could spend some of the district's savings on projects that I felt like were needed. Now, the list of the projects I felt like were needed, this is not all of that list. This is between, now, that was my part. Ms. Davis also talks to maintenance, and sometimes maintenance talks to me. Sometimes we're all, you know, to get, so, we came up with this list that we felt like, and I think you guys had a lot of input by that time with...
I think maintenance, this is maintenance's list.
Of what they think needs to happen. Well, if their list meets the principal's list, then that's a list. Then it kind of gets into what all can you get on the list. So, I'll let you guys now take over from...
And we do have some, we have the added technology projects that don't come from maintenance.
Right, right. Not everything's maintenance.
And then the guacka that was a district project, but most of the list comes from maintenance.
Yes, sir. Mr. Dupuy, maybe we could answer your question a little bit better. We did a, we're doing, we're currently using our staff to do what we call facility conditions index to go ahead and find out where our departments or our schools are. And this is part of what we, we've done so far this year, is we've actually gone to the campuses. We've taken a look at the work orders that are coming in. We've actually gone up on top of the roofs and checked them out. We currently are, are contracting with SS McClure to go ahead and do our mechanical plumbing and electrical assessments, so that we can go ahead and better report to the, to the Board, Dr. Kane and Mr. Hartley, to make sure that we understand what we need to do at the district level for the next following 10 years. That's, that's our projection, to, we can put a plan together of what we need to do every year, so that it, within 10 years, we are done with the major renovations at our campuses. And that's what we're currently trying to do.
And sir, I think probably if all of us took that list and we decided to prioritize it, I don't think any of us would have the same list. Because I think it's arguable, like, why is one six instead of seven, you know? So, I don't know that there is a definitive, this is the right list. I think this is a matter of opinions of what the priorities should be.
Right. I'm sure it's, the thing about which reasonable people disagree. I guess I'm, I was just curious to know, it seemed like I'm being asked about on some very, fairly specific projects here that I really don't have a clue about. And I, but I, well, I've, in a lot of this, you know, you have to proceed on good faith, but I just was curious to name, name one.
Name one is most curious to be...
Oh, oh, name it. Okay. Upgrade electrical equipment in front hall at Waco High.
So, we have some...
What will it enable us to do that we can't do now?
We have some campuses, particularly our older campuses, where we've maxed out capabilities for the electrical boxes, junction boxes there, where we can get service to different areas of the school. You know, we're becoming more technologically advanced as a district. We're adding projectors. We're adding screens. We're adding other electrical devices, computer systems that these schools weren't designed for. So, we're...
Agree with that is the classrooms on the front hall.
We have to go through each panel and kind of see where we're loaded, where we're overloaded, where we're underloaded, and move those around to serve classrooms, office areas. And we're really having a problem throughout, but that's our critical need area.
And I'll give you an example, Mr. Dupuy. We had a service call that came in this week, classroom, I believe, it was 215, no, excuse me, 235 and 233 at Waco High. They kept turning on their projector, and the projector kept kicking off the breaker. The, the problem is, we have too many, too many, too much equipment...
Plugged into the same circuit.
Exactly. To a building that was designed and built back in the 60s. And that is, and that is the issues that we're having. So, we're trying to prioritize. I know where the district has, you know, doesn't have all the money in the world, and we're trying to...
Right. Well, just, for instance, and I'm not, electrical, electrical work is expensive. I'd be surprised when you get done for $25,000, but...
Well, we do a real good job of, of negotiating with, with everybody when we get bids in. We, we've been in the, in the construction business for, for a long time. I believe Mr. Hayford's been in it for 20 years. Six or seven of them, as far as an estimator?
I worked for about four years as a estimator.
So, we...
Well, and I, look, I trust you guys. I'm not questioning your, you all know a whole lot more about this than I do. I, no question. I'm just curious about the process that we went through to, this was a lot of work, and somebody put a lot of thought into it. And if there's anything else, pardon me, wants to just sort of make sure that we're, we got a lot of different things we could spend money on productively. I want to make sure that this, we get the most bang for our buck, that this is what is most pressing for the, for the district, is all.
If the Board isn't comfortable, this isn't, I have to deny, but if the Board would like a workshop just on this, that would be absolutely fine.
I would like to...
We provide for every item, and, but the Board should hear that, because it is a large amount of money. It should have the opportunity.
Mr. President.
Mr. Speaker.
For clarification. We're going to see every single one of these individual jobs again, because anything that's over $50,000 we have to approve...
Not all of them.
But before that, we have to approve the construction delivery method for the project. And, and so, they may be in front of us twice before we actually approve the project. Wants to approve the construction delivery method, just depending on our choice, us approving the award of the bid. So, there's going to be a lot of opportunity for us to learn more about each project, is my understanding.
That's right.
Except for these smaller projects that you have proposed, JOC.
The larger projects will have design included in there also. There, there are a lot of steps to that. I would like to clarify the process, if I may, that we went through to kind of put this list together. So, we looked at prior history requests, kind of wish list, if you will, from past years, kind of accumulated all those together. Weeded through those based on campuses that, that were kind of critical need. Once we did that, we then compared it to the work order history that we have through our automated system, CCMS system, went back and pulled up work history and see how it correlated to that list. That way, we can kind of back up that this is indeed a problem. It's been an ongoing problem for at least a year. Beyond that, we went back and started looking at cost savings. Where can we really apply the dollars for the most effect? And we worked with Ms. Davis, going through all those things and discussing, you know, what we may do with those campuses, what we may not do with those campuses, and trying to weed through this list. The list was much bigger to start with. We've, we've narrowed it down.
Thanks. That's reassuring, and I'm why I asked the question. I guess the only...
It was about three times this size.
Right, right.
And they're still out there for the next round of...
And if, if the list, if it was three times that size, you know, needed doing, then at some point, we've got to look at that as well. I, it's, it's not necessarily spending or committing the, what, six or eight million dollars to it that bothers me. I just want to know we're hitting what needs to be hit. That's all. And I guess I'd like to know that the campus principals were consulted on this, and this is what they see as a problem on their campus, and that there's some agreement there. That's all I got. Kevin, thank you.
Let me follow up on a couple of questions. I've got, I've got a couple of things. You talked about there, because obviously, this is only about a third of the projects that were actually on the list, cost-wise. What, I mean, was there sort of criteria that you were using to prioritize this? Were there certain factors that, you know, moved things up or down the list?
We, well, go ahead.
When we're prioritizing, we're looking at mostly mechanical, electrical, plumbing, roofing issues. We want to keep the services running. We want to keep, you know, the buildings of drive secure. That's where we really try to place our, our priorities. We want to keep everything up and functioning. You know, working on the roof and things like that extends the lifespan of that building. That, that's really our critical elements.
And we did, and we wanted to make sure we didn't have any problems with water infiltration causing additional problems, or even, in some cases, building failures. And, and we wanted to make sure that we attacked that first.
Okay. My second question is one thing you said at the very beginning. I mean, have we kind of done a, some sort of timeline to make sure that, I mean, this, to me, a five-page list for this many projects looks pretty ambitious, considering we've got students in the campuses most of the time. I mean, have we looked at to make sure this is really a doable list between now and the start of next year? I mean, have we?
We, we're, we want to be engaged in all those projects by the end of the year. Some of these are going to require design process. Some of them won't require a design process. We can move relatively quickly with those.
And we can do multiple projects. We can do the, for example, we can do the track and field tracks. We can do that at the same time that we're doing the parking lots. We can do that at the same time that we're doing the electrical work. So, these projects are not all at the same area, and we have now a very good staff that we can be out there monitoring what's going on and what's taking place.
And I think the parking lots are an interesting question. And I guess I can get And I guess I can get back to the first, first question I asked. I mean, for example, I know we're building a pavilion at Indian Spring, which I assume is for PE, correct? And I'm assuming that's because the other middle schools have a second gym and Indian Spring doesn't. Is that, is that sort of the rationale? But we also have three elementary schools, maybe four elementary schools, that don't have any gym at all, whereas all the others have a place when it's raining where they can do PE, and these books kind of have basically a classroom where they're having to do PE. In terms of prioritizing it, why was, you know, Indian Spring up at the top, and these other elementary schools like Providence Heights, some in South Waco? Because every plan I've seen, those schools have continued, you know, they're not one we've, even on the long-range plans that we intend not to use, it seems like.
Well, that's, that's, that would not be them, that would be before they got to them. The reason Indian Springs was put on there is because there's, there's four middle schools, and the kinds of activities that they do, what you can do with a kindergarten or up to fifth grade in a classroom or on a playground, as opposed to the expectations of athletics and sports and working out. I mean, it's a very small gym at Indian Spring, and we've got three grade levels there. And so some of that was comparability, which could, the argument could also be with the elementary schools. And again, that does get into the priorities.
Okay. I'm just getting, well, I mean, and the reason I asked you, really, I thought tied in parking lots, and we're spending one and a quarter million dollars on asphalt for parking lots around the district, and then we've still got these schools that don't have even the metal building for a PE facility. And that, so I didn't know how that prioritization was being done.
Yeah, that wouldn't be them, that would be us.
All right.
And, and, and sir, what you're saying is arguable, it could be, look, the reason we bring it to the board is because the board has a different perspective. You're our check and balance, and the board may say, look, it's not that we're not far the parking lot, but we feel like you're, you're out of balance, and we prefer to put the four metal buildings up at the four middle schools and put this off to next year, that'd be fine, that's why we come to you.
Well, I just, I want to make sure all these things were, that y'all were looking at kind of the overall campus, you know, that, not just the maintenance list, but the overall needs of the district, and that all this was fitting into the bigger picture. And if you feel like we've done that, process-wise, I agree with Karen, I trust you guys, I just want to make sure we've.
I don't think there's anybody of the four of us who would say, I am totally confident, I don't even have second thoughts about that list. I think, you know, any given day, you can look at the list and go, you know what, maybe this is more important. We have a lot of needs, and they can't all be met with three or 4.5 million dollars. So.
But I also know y'all have spent much more time with this list than we have. And so to a certain extent, I want to defer to your judgment.
You might want to hurt my feelings.
Well, and I mean, we have not in the past, or recently, I mean, we did with Cesar Chavez and some of Indian Spring do more addition projects, because we were selling buildings at the time, and it was part of the consolidation.
Well, we kind of built the new shop over at the Vanney Factoring Academy, right?
And we had some grant funds to help with that, about $350,000, I think so far of that's been funded through the grant funds.
And how much did we pay for, out of our fund balance?
We had budgeted a million eight, and so we've got about 350 back for that. But I think part of the thinking, too, was in the long-range facility plan that we have been sort of tentatively looking at for possible future B-word of a bond, that we have Brook Avenue, you know, Providence Heights, we have South Waco in Phase One, that we would, were considering like a building wing addition, and part of that is to address that exact issue that we talked about, is those small PE rooms, and I know at Providence Heights, Brook Avenue, depending on what we do with Brook Avenue, libraries, you know, those are some of the things that we would typically address, and it's partly why it's titled the way it is, is major renovations, remodeling, repairs, because that's more what we do with general fund typically.
And I, and I, I thought about the bond issue, in fact, I visited with Principal Earp, because I know when we did, like Dean Hyland, the gym was fairly new, we had built it recently, and so even when we built the new school, we kept the PE facility and that wing, and just tied it into the new construction. And so, I mean.
And we did the same thing at Heinz.
At J H Heinz, right, we kept the gym there, too.
Well, but the majority of these, especially when you're talking about the real maintenance, this is not cosmetic, these are things that really need to be taken care of. For durability, and, and, and also, I would, I would suspect or expect that, you talk now, after you do these jobs, what, five, 10 years longevity?
Majority of the parking lots, those projects will get us five to seven years, some of those projects will get us 10 years.
Get us more.
Okay, so something, like I say, some of these are not going to be reoccurring, but some of them, upgrades and stuff, will, will be.
Once we get the paving done and in place, it's, it's a lot easier for us to maintain it.
Right.
You know, we've got the funds within our own budget for us to be out there and maintaining it.
Maintaining it.
Just getting it to the level that we can maintain. And that's what we're proposing to do.
Right, okay.
But we'll entertain whatever.
No, no, I, I understand that, because it's got to be to a level, you can spend more money trying to repair it, and, and, I mean, maintain it, and instead of repairing it anyway, so, in the long run, we're going to save money.
And I think Ms. Teakell's absolutely correct, that we're not necessarily approving any of these tonight, they're all, most, the vast majority of them are going to come back to us at least once, maybe two times. I was really more interested in the process, the, made sure that certain projects didn't end up on the list, and, and sort of the prioritization on how these were chosen and the others were excluded, and that.
It's mostly from a facilities longevity point of view. I mean, when we looked at things, we looked at the different systems and how to get the greatest lifespan out of these facilities from top to bottom.
Other questions, Ms. Sykes?
Kind of as a follow-up to that, given the fact that this is a subset of a much larger list, when do you anticipate, and this is going to be an ongoing process as we approve these projects, when will we probably see, or when will you anticipate we would see the next round, I guess?
I'm anticipating that Ms. Davis does another excellent job, and that the Texas Legislature will pony up and, and do what they need to do, and that next year, my intent, and I don't want to give Ms. Davis a heart attack, is to bring another $3 million list to you.
It's my heart, it's my heart.
Maybe give Mr. Sykes a heart attack.
And, and because I, we need to get down, we, we need to get, we need to be proactive. We have been reactive too long, we need to be proactive, and we need to be able to discuss these things. Principals have been working with, it's harder to work when you don't have the facilities, or when they're not up to date, or your roof is leaking, or your lights are always turning out. And so what we need to do is, as far as I'm concerned, every year, and I don't want to mention that it may even go into the third year, until we can actually get caught up, and we're not talking fancy, we're talking about keeping the lights on. I mean, there is not a thing here that someone can point to and say, boy, that's love.
Well, I appreciate the process that you used, and we've talked a lot about priorities and how you arrived at that, but that's why, in view of all those conversations, we're always going to have projects bubbling up, and they're going to be unanticipated, perhaps at this point in time, and they may be larger dollar amounts as well. So it's an ongoing process, I understand that.
And the bond issue, I mean, we need, you know, that's always before us.
Right.
And that, now, that's the big chunk that would take care of a lot of building needs, like, for instance, Chavez, even though I said the, all the middle schools are equal, you know, Chavez is twice the size of Indian Spring, and, and its gym facility is inadequate, and they're not inadequate enough to get on this list, but it's on the radar list. The, the ones that you mentioned, to have an equal, some of the libraries in some of the schools, I mean, there's, we just need to take care of that. So that's my plan, in addition to, I was talking to you about a bond issue.
Okay.
Just that the board knows what we're doing. We're actually going, with our plumbers, our electricians, our HVAC personnel, we're actually going to the campuses, and, and we're doing a facilities condition, a report back, so that we can see what we've got. We need, we first need to know what we have out there before we can decide what is, what is priority and what is not priority. And that's what we're doing, and, and hopefully, maybe by the end of the year, 14, 15, we should have that finished.
Cheryl, I kind of passed over, but I do appreciate your clarification, that other than the Healthcare Academy, where we're doing some renovation, and then maybe the pavilion at Indian Spring, the rest of this is really maintenance and repair, not construction or major remodeling or additions. And I think that's, I think that's, that's a fair distinction.
And at times, you know, we have, a number of times, since I've been here, I think maybe four times, five times, we've actually gone, after the budget was adopted, when we kind of saw what our ending fund balance was, we've gone, I mean, one year it was because of a tornado, we had to, but we've gone back and put some money out there. But typically, that's always been more for these major repair renovation-type projects. We did have 13 million, if you recall, in the bond election in 2008, that we issued over the 2008, 2009 series, and so we had that 13 million that, because we earned enough money on our investments and, and had projects come in lower, we were able to do a lot more than we had even planned to with the bonds. But we've, you know, basically, we're using the last of those bond funds up to help fund these projects here. So any big projects, I think we would look to, you know, as we've kind of phased in some of those bonds, we're looking at some of the bigger projects, you know, three to four million maybe in each of those series as well.
Okay. Other questions, comments? And I do think, folks, I think, we do talk about, we've done additions at Advanced Manufacturing, Advanced Healthcare, those are really different animals because of the other districts involved, because of the scope, because of the real push behind career and technology, and the need to address those career-based programs, we needed the facilities to do that. And that, that's a higher priority maybe than some of the other gyms and PE facilities. But I do, to echo what Mr. Sykes said, to the extent things continually bubble up, unanticipated, I don't want us to forget some of these other things we've been talking about for years that are shortcomings around the district, like some of those PE facilities that are still non-existent. I'm sorry, Mr. Dupree.
I'm sorry, I just, is, by chance, I guess we'll be improving the track facilities at Waco High, maybe on the other two-thirds of the list? Was there any mention of that? I guess that would be, that would be Tousis' call, right?
Yeah.
I know it's potentially a complex answer with what we've got going on.
Three tracks, I mean, it is three tracks.
Is it on there?
I think it's on there.
I think I missed that.
There were four tracks missing.
Haley, come on up to that.
Harry.
There was Carver, Tennyson, Paul Tyson, and Muni, and we actually looked at those today, and Paul Tyson, looks like it's just going to need to be a spray resurface, because of the longevity that we need it, we can get through with that. Muni, will be some minor patching, and get probably four or five more years on it. And then the two other tracks are an old latex-type track over asphalt, and they're really in bad shape, and so those are going to be the most expensive. And so just budget-wise, we'll have to see where those go, but.
I think Mr. Sy, Mr. Dupree's correct, when you look on here, it mentions the middle school tracks.
It says middle school.
And Tyson isn't listed on here anywhere.
You saw it in the roll forward of the funds from current.
Those one we'd already identified last year.
Yeah, it's already, it's in those amendments that are rolling forward, I think that's probably where you saw it.
And we adopt it?
It's a night's agenda?
On the budget amendments, on the consent agenda.
Gotcha, okay.
That's where it was.
So we're in 400 pages, all right, I missed it.
All right, other questions, comments?
How clever.
All right, then I will entertain a motion on item 8K, the renovation, modeling, repair, and maintenance projects. Is there not a motion?
I move that we accept the administration's recommendation and commit $4,735,000 in $62 from unassigned general fund balance to committed funds, for the projects as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Sykes, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Teakell. Any other questions, comments, or discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, board.
Item 9A, memorandum of agreement with the McLennan County Public Health District, Dr. Kane.
Yes, Mr. President, I don't know if I've ever introduced the district nurse, but Heather Branch, Nurse Branch, would you stand up please? We are blessed to have a fabulous district nurse. And as she's been here, we've tightened up many of our procedures, and we're getting much better at what we were doing in our health services. One thing that she found was that there was a memorandum of agreement that we should have been, every year, updating. The last time it was updated was in 2003. So we would like to have this agreement, it really came to light with the recent Ebola scare that we had, we were making certain that we were working well with other entities, and we found this, that we were obviously, the county was willing to not make this an issue, but we, we agreed that we would take this back to the board, and that every year we would ask that this be upgraded. Basically, it says that we will be working very closely with them, and if they see, say, you need to make certain everybody's got a mask on who comes in the clinic, that we were going to make a commitment that everybody who comes in the clinic has masks on. And that they would not be reimbursing us with masks, but they wouldn't be asking us to use masks unless it was just really necessary.
Are there any questions, comments, any further discussion? All right, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement. Thank you, Mr. Dupree, is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Ms. Manning, all those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, motion passes unanimously, item 10, reports and discussion, behavior intervention aid overview, Dr. Kane.
Yes, sir, the board is very generous, and they let us try something that's not been tried to our knowledge in other districts, particularly districts that struggle with the high percentage of poverty that we have. Many of our administrators and teachers were spending a lot of time working with discipline issues, and some of those issues were things that it didn't necessarily need someone with a mask to bring, it needed an adult who was committed. And the board really, really went over the top in meeting that need for the district, and stood out, stepped out there, and even made our ideas better. And I would like each month to report on how we've done so far. One, Mr. Southanna gives you the actual statistics, but I thought it would be nice if this month some elementary principals would come forth, so you could talk to them about what they're seeing. Next month, it'll be our two high school principals, and then the next month, it would be middle schools. So with our elementary principals who are speaking tonight, I know Bevel, and, I mean, Ms. Cohn from Bell's Hill, Ms. Henry from Parkdale, Mr. Koch from Crestview. Ms. Henry, why don't you go ahead and kick off, unless y'all've got something planned?
No, I don't. I, I have three behavior aides, I was able to afford one, and luckily was able to get two that were given to me by you all. And my goal for my behavior aides was to find people that could act as both a mentor to my students, and get in the classroom and support instruction in the classroom, because I knew that if, if I could get behavior under control, that, that we could begin to fill the gaps. And I am so happy with the three that I have been able to hire. One is about to graduate from college, so she's been a tremendous asset. Another is a football coach, Pee-wee football coach, and he is also in college and has a 4.0, and is a tremendous mentor to our, to our young men. And our other is just everywhere in the building. It has been a tremendous success on our campus, a tremendous.
Thank you, Ms. Henry, are there any questions? To Martin?
I got a question.
Ms. Manning.
Yes.
Has the referrals gone down in your school compared to what it was, and?
You know, I, I had my clerk run that today, and I am dead even with last year at this time, but. But what I have seen is that it's gonna take some time. It's gonna take some time because we're filling some gaps, because very often, discipline is the, disruptive behavior is the result of frustration. And if I can get people in there to help fill those gaps, then we're gonna see that. It's, it's gonna happen.
So, you saying, you saying that right now, you, you in the same, as this time last year, you, you still have the same amount? There's no really any change?
Well, as far as the number of referrals, and we don't have that many, but as far as the number of referrals, it's actually exactly the same as it was last year. But what I'm beginning to see, that, the first six weeks, what I've seen in these last couple of weeks, is that it's starting to improve, and it will, but it's gonna take time. Because we've got some gaps to fill, because that frustration leads to disruptive behavior.
Well, what, what, what rate is, do you have the most, fifth, fourth, third? Is there any particular rate that, that is more problematic than the others?
I have my, my male behavior specialist, he works solely with fifth grade. And I can tell you that for fifth grade, I do not believe I've had one disciplinary referral from fifth grade. It is tremendous, just his presence in the room.
When they gonna come back?
You mean that?
The elementary, I mean, you know, really, I don't.
You know what we could do? We could do elementary, high school, middle, and then come back with ele, I mean, it could be every third month, each group could.
Only thing have to be every third month, but.
You'd like to have a report at the end of the year, kind of comparing actual.
Right, yeah, because this is kind of.
Well, and understand that the first six weeks, they, the behavior aides needed training. We weren't certain, you know, we tried some things that we thought would work and didn't. And some of them thought the job was gonna be something, it wasn't. So.
We weren't sure the role that we wanted them to play, and, and it's been a work in progress, and, and they've stepped up to the plate, and, and I think we'll see that.
Thank you, Ms. Henry.
Thank you.
Ms. Cone?
We feel very fortunate to have the behavior aide on our campus that we have. She's a young lady who is taking a very proactive approach in dealing with the children. She's very flexible in all that she does. She's working with different grade levels, all the grade levels. She's kind of zeroed in on some of the younger children in Kinder and First that were needing a little extra help. And, you know, sometimes it's hard on those little bitty kiddos, especially at the first of the year, if they're brand-new to school, to fit into the mold. And so, that's one of the main roles that she's taken on. But her being proactive, I was talking with her today, and she said, well, you know, if I see a kiddo, if it's going down the hall, in the lunchroom, wherever it is in the building, and I see that they're not doing what they're supposed to be, then I talk to them about it, and then I go back and talk to their teacher about it, and I want to involve their teacher in it. And she said, there are a lot of children that just need a little hug or a little bit of attention. And she said, I can relate to those children, and, you know, in everything we do, we talk about our relationships. And she said, I can really relate because I was one of those kids growing up. And she said, if someone hadn't stepped in and helped me, I could've taken the wrong path. And so, she said, sometimes I just needed a hug. She said, I was a procrastinator, and I didn't do my homework, and I didn't do these things, but someone stepped in and helped me. And she said, that's what I want for these children. And so, that's kind of the role that she has taken on. And she said, I didn't like school when I was little, but as I grew up in school, I realized the importance of an education, and she got, you know, to realize it more. She's actually a hairstylist, and she said, I love that. And she had told me one time she learned that as a little girl, she would watch the lady that did her mother's hair, and she learned from her, and then she became a hairstylist. And then this opportunity came along, and she said, I really love this, I never thought I'd want to work in a school. And so, she's had a very positive effect on our children. And we have seen right now a few less referrals. It's probably not just what she's doing, it's, it's a lot of things that are involved. But I, I do believe that her relationship with children and her positive effect will benefit us this year.
Cone, you probably just answered this question indirectly, and as you probably know, I mean, this, Dr. Kane's very nicely gave credit to the Board, but I mean, this really came from the campuses. I mean, during the spring, teachers were contacting various folks on the Board saying, we just need more help, we just need more adult presence on the campuses, and then we were able to find, find the money to make that happen. But it really came by listening to the campuses. But during the summer, when I would run into folks at restaurants or at the ball field, one of the questions was, on our larger campuses, if we just put one behavioral aide on there, could just one person make a difference on a really large campus? And you're obviously one of our larger elementary schools, and it sounds like you're saying that that one individual, by making those relationships, really can make a difference on behavior on that campus.
Yes, sir, I feel like she has. My ISS aide is also very similar in being proactive in dealing with her, the students that make the wrong choices and do end up in ISS. So, I think her presence is also very beneficial. So, with those two ladies working together, I think that they have made a big difference.
Other questions from Ms. Cone? Mr. Cope, I think you're up.
I'll echo what these two ladies.
Yeah, I got in that picture first of all.
That should not be on this wall, for sure. That was three hours of what you paid me for that day. But I think we raised over six hundred dollars for the Education Foundation.
Okay.
Three hours, we paid you to be taped to the wall?
Yeah. I would've, I would've rather not been taped to the wall. It was a pretty, pretty trying for someone that's as high-energy as me. I'm gonna echo what they say, the position works, it's gonna take time. We're dealing with a student or a group of students that one or two interventions is not gonna make a lasting impact on. We're talking behavior modification. And when we, when my campus decided that we were gonna go ahead and go forward and take this position, we looked at how we wanted to use the person. And we kind of put it in a twofold approach. We wanted a proactive approach with it and a reactive approach. And for the reactive approach, what we looked at was, how do we keep kids in class? Kids that aren't in class aren't, aren't getting educated. And some of our kids, they're frustrated, they're acting out, maybe some sort of cooling-off period, what can we do? And so, with this behavior tutor, what we've done is, if a teacher's having a moment with Mr. Cope, he's being challenging in class, and it's not a referral, it's something that's just causing a disruption, it's affecting the ability for other students to learn, they'll pick up the phone, they'll call my office, my office will have my behavior, they'll call her on her walkie-talkie, she'll go to that classroom. When she gets there, she'll do two things. She'll assess, first of all, if it's a major incident or if it's a minor incident. If it's minor, she's gonna pull the kid out in the hall, she's gonna talk him, she's gonna coach him up, and then if they're okay with that cooling-off, she'll put him back in the classroom. If not, she will actually go in there and sit with them, get them back on task, and then move on to the next student. That's kind of the reactive approach. The proactive approach, we've looked at, first thing in the morning, a lot of times, the behaviors haven't quite started, sometimes they do in the cafeteria, we know, but on most mornings, the behaviors haven't started. So, what my tutor does is she does morning check-ins. You know, we have our, our caseload, I guess is what we can call it, of students that we know that need frequent interventions and are gonna need frequent touches to have their behavior modified. And so, this person will actually go in, check in, Mr. Cope, how you doing today? Remember, we had a problem yesterday in Mr. Manning's class, I need you to do that. Sometimes she'll make it personal, sometimes she'll just do a walk-by, stick her head in the window, look at what the student's doing, and if they're doing what they're supposed to, they go on. You know, this, the effects, the results, you're asking, Mr. Manning, my referrals are pretty similar to what they were last year in terms of numbers, but what my numbers show is, I have a greater number of students getting more referrals right now, in terms of more frequent. The number of students getting referrals has decreased, but I just have a few students that are just keeping us very busy right now. And they're ones that we're continuing to work with. So, that's kind of how my numbers are skewed in terms of the quantity versus the, I guess, the quality per se.
I also think one, one part of the numbers that aren't gonna show is, like the student you're talking about, before, he would've had an assistant principal, or he would've taken care of that. Now, this person's taking care of it, and he's in the classroom, and the assistant principal's in the classroom. And that's what doesn't show up, is how we're able to free the administrators up for actually being instructional leaders as opposed to dealing with some of the more minor.
Yeah, Mr. Lackey, my AP would definitely echo that sentiment. He has had a lot more free time to do academics and things like that versus dealing with every little phone call that, that pops up.
And also, some of the parents have said, and sometimes administrators are a little bit more in a hurry than, than the behavior aides, and so, the parents are feeling like they're getting a little bit more conversation and more detail, because as an administrator, sometimes we may not spend as much time on the phone. And I think that's another part of the service that's hard to measure.
The position works, I mean, this is, we're not gonna judge results after six weeks, but I can tell you just from the campus climate, and the, and the teacher perception, things like that, they, they love having the position. I'd love to have a, another one would be beneficial to me, I've got one, we're making it work just fine, but it is truly a very valuable position and much appreciated by the campuses.
Thank you, Mr. Cope. Questions, comments from the Board?
You only have one also?
Yes, sir.
Why do you have three?
I asked for.
No, 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 no.
Ms. Henry.
I was able to afford one, and, and the deal was, if you, if you can afford one, you're gonna get one, and, and then I was given a third one.
Here, okay, the, the original deal was, if they would pay for a half out of their title money, because that title, then I would pay for the other half. Then the Board very generously said, we think every campus should have one. So, every campus got one. The ones that already committed, like Ms. Henry had already said, well, I don't want a half, I don't pay a hoe, if you'll pay a hoe, she had two, the Board gave her another one. Mr. Cope wouldn't have had one because he spent his title money another way.
We, we got a parent involvement specialist is what, is what we used that, that pair of money for, so.
And so, he got the one the Board, the Board got. And I think that's part of the same thing from this.
You have a what?
A parent involvement specialist.
And what's that?
It's a person's designed to increase the, the parent activity on the campus. They're doing parent trainings, things like that for our campus. It's a position that we're trying out, Ms. Basson presented it to us, we looked at it, trying to increase parent involvement through title funds, and it's going very well.
Okay, so, so you're getting the parents more involved, which is, which I know for a fact, from when I was growing up, my, my mother was always involved.
And we know what that means.
Absolutely.
So, that, that means that if the parent's involved, the kid's gonna kind of fall in line behind that.
That's the process, that's the theory, that's what we're working for.
Now, how long have you had that?
I, we just, we just got it this year.
Just got it this year?
Yes, sir.
Okay, next time you come, I would like to have a little bit more information about that and what the process is and what they're doing and everything, I think that would be.
Absolutely.
Brendan, are you the only one with that?
Uh, no, I'm the only elementary with the parent.
Ms. Bass, who else, what other campus?
Waco High has two, Carver has one.
What we might do is, like in another month, is have presentations on, on that.
Because I never heard of that one.
Okay, well, you're gonna find out more.
Mr. Sykes?
Yeah, thank you. With, in regards to the, there was some training that went on at the first of the year for, I guess, each campus, each specialist that was brought on board. And as the semester or, or, you know, fall and spring progress, will there be opportunities for them to exchange successful strategies with each other? Since this is a new program, go ahead.
Actually, coincidentally, special ed was required, required because of the, some of our numbers, that we needed to put a certain amount of money because we have a disproportionate amount of African-American male students who are receiving discipline.
Okay.
And so, we were required to spend a certain amount of money. Well, we hired a specialist. Well, this specialist is a behavior specialist, so we took the opportunity, since we just hired all these behavior aides, instead of hiring someone else to train them, we're using our in-house person.
Okay.
And so, they're getting consistent training and, so that, and throughout the year, and it's not costing us anymore. At one time, it's like, well, we'll bring in someone maybe twice a year. Now, she can meet with them every month, and it doesn't cost any more money.
Okay. So, that's, that's enabling sharing of strategies, if you will?
My, my tutor came back from the training.
She's actually gonna present next month, if I remember correctly. Ms. Dr. Torres, you look parched.
I was going to share that although I've only been there a couple of weeks, we're also utilizing our behavior and instructional aide with compliance. So, it's a real big preventive issue to be in compliance with students with behavioral intervention plans, whether they're 504-identified students or special education-identified students. So, that benefit is not gonna show up in referral numbers, but it is hugely beneficial because our instructional behavioral aide can not only implement the behavioral intervention plans, but can use that information to share with teachers and model that in the classroom as they work with that individual student. And then the teachers can learn how that works and how effective it is with that child, and transfer that to other children in the classroom as necessary.
We're all over.
I'm not sure that answers my question.
Oh, okay, ask your question again.
Well, if folks are using these differently, is there an opportunity for them to share kind of the best practices and what's successful?
Yeah, at those meetings. Because it's not necessarily a meeting where, okay, sit down, you're gonna be trained for an hour. It's like, sit down, here's some training, here's thirty minutes, while you're doing it.
Okay. Okay, so all the campuses there at one time, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
It's my understa, Ms. Page will be here next month, and there'll be, Ms. Page presenting on the behavioral specialist that I just said that was hired, and you'll have the middle school principals talking about behavior aids.
There was a training, sorry, Dr. Kane, a couple of weeks ago that my behavior tutor went to, and she came back saying that all the other behavior tutors were there, and they had talked, and she'd gotten some ideas there.
Okay.
I can't remember the date off the top of my head, but I know that she had to go for the day, and we missed her when she was gone.
I guess my, the reason my question, obviously, we get more successful strategies spread throughout the district, you know, everyone wins on that.
Absolutely.
And ultimately, one of these reports will be actually bringing them, helping behavior aides too, that can talk about from their perspective what they thought the job was gonna be and what it turned out to be and.
And Brendan, I appreciate your using the word reactive. That poor word gets a, you know, a disservice, I think. Everybody says we're gonna be proactive on everything, and there's some things where you really have to be reactive. When, when a child acts out, it's an opportunity to interact with that child, remove them from the classroom, and then, and once they've gone through that cooling-down process, get them back in without the teacher having to stop instruction for the other twenty-one students to do the same thing. And I think that reaction usage is really what we envisioned. I mean, the thought was, these behavior aides will be in the classrooms, interacting with students, and not just another administrator, you know, looking over reports and that kind of thing. And I appreciate your kind of using it, having the walkie-talkie component where they can get out there and do that, because that's, that's really sort of, that, that interaction and, as you write, sometimes it is reactionary, and that's, that's part of the, part of the school day.
Well, punishment doesn't change behavior, we, we know that. And so, if we're gonna truly affect long-term change in our students, we're gonna have to modify the behaviors being done. And disciplining them all day long is not gonna bring about the change, it's just gonna keep out of our numbers. So, we gotta find other solutions.
And we're committed that our behavior aides are spending ninety-eight percent of their time actually with kids, and it's, and either on the phone with parents or with parents, and it's a lot of paperwork.
Mine's a hundred percent.
Yours is a hundred percent?
Yeah, there's.
I like that even better.
There's no covering classes, there's not, now, if a substitute's having issues, absolutely that behavior's going, aide's going in to address the students at that time, but they're not covering classes, they're not doing, no, no, ma'am.
Other questions, comments? Thanks, folks.
Thank you.
Item ten B, the two thousand fourteen delinquent tax collection report. And Board members, if, I think most of you have already been told, your written copy of the report's actually in your envelope, of your Board mail this evening. It's Mr. Meyer, Mr. Boswick, whenever y'all are ready.
We obviously appreciate and the opportunity, not only to be involved in the service to the district in terms of collecting delinquent taxes, but as well to inform the Board as to where they are or to where you are, realizing that property, y'all are, the property tax piece is a huge piece of your ability to finance all that's going on in the district. What I'd like to do very quickly, in looking at the Board, y'all have heard this report each a number of times, may even have it memorized.
Robert told me before the meeting, he knows this is our favorite report of the year.
And I understand that, and that is why we come every time with bells and whistles. But what I'm gonna try to do is give you an overview, historical overview, so that you can gauge your relative vulnerability, if you have any, and the bottom line is, you don't. It's a very good report. Your current tax collections, which is what you have collected in the year that it was levied, is ninety-seven point eight-three percent. So, that's, that's a very good percentage. It's consistent with your historical percentages, frankly, a little above your typical historical percentages, so there's no reason particularly to have concern about that.[1781.12] So there's no reason particularly to have concern about that. Typically, the reason, if it goes down, it's pretty much directly related to the ability of taxpayers to pay their taxes. And so in tougher economic times, you see that percentage drop off slightly. But you're in good shape this year. In terms of actual total annual tax collections, you've heard this before, but it probably can't be said too many times, you collect, in terms of current taxes, delinquent taxes, penalties, and interest, over 100 percent of your levy, year in, year out. That's, that's an important piece of security for the district, and y'all need to obviously understand that. Finally, in terms of collection of the tax, of the current tax levy, for 2013, you've collected 98.15 percent of the delinquent taxes. That will, and always has, increase over the time that we have to work the delinquent taxes that are handed to us. Ultimately, you're going to collect over 99 percent of the delinquent taxes. So, all this to say, there is nothing that we see in this process that would cause any alarm, in fact, quite the contrary. From a property tax, or from a delinquent tax, property tax collection standpoint, the district looks, looks in good shape. Having said all of that, and I think I say it nearly every time, and particularly having sent, or sat in y'all's seats, we particularly understand that we are not just tax collectors. We are trying to collect your taxes, we're trying to do it efficiently, we're trying to do it diligently, but we realize that the people who are paying those taxes, in addition to yourselves and myself, are your constituents, the parents of the kids you're trying to serve, the families of the kids you're trying to serve. And given that fact, we think it is critical that we do so in a professional way, in a way that addresses and is empathetic to their needs, and the particular concerns they're having, and their inabilities to pay, like frankly, most of them would like to do. And we try to do that in a respectful, thoughtful way, that is not, is certainly not an embarrassment to the district, but hopefully emulates the best aspects of the district as you deal with your constituents and parents.
Thank you, Ms. Boswick. Myers?
Thank you. President Atkins, Dr. Kane, members of the board, Robert Myers from McCurry Law Firm. I just want to echo what Rick has said, as far as the overall property tax health of the district. Your current collection percentage continues to swing upward from when it had sort of dipped in the past years because of overall economic conditions. The district's economic health is sort of reflected in our property tax collections. You have before you the various reports and charts that we have traditionally delivered to you. On page five, there's a series of pie charts that hopefully represent, or do represent, the taxes you turn over to us on a year-by-year basis. In a very short period of time, we have usually, and as this year's always is the case as well, quickly and effectively collected those taxes, and done so in a way that Rick has pointed out, realizes that many of our taxpayers and property owners are not as fortunate as some of us, and struggle with economic circumstances, financial circumstances, or health circumstances, or whatever it is that prevents them from timely paying their taxes. We have a large staff at our local office here that deals with these folks, they're bilingual, so they can talk and interact with these folks, despite whatever language they may be more comfortable in dealing with. And if you're in our office on a regular daily basis, there's a constant flow of folks coming in that have received communications from us, whether they're letters, or sometimes lawsuits. And, but our whole point of that is to reach out and get hold of them, and say, "Look, you need to come in and visit with us, and see what we need to do to resolve these taxes." And I think we are able to, in a very positive way, recover your taxes, and make it a fruitful process for the taxpayer who wants to pay their taxes, and ultimately does have the ability to pay their taxes. Last year, when we met with you, which was a rather brief meeting, I think you were running off, which is something we're sort of used to, people running off with us, so we really are fairly skilled in keeping hold of people. And I have you tonight, and I saw it was a short agenda, so I thought, well, you probably have lots of time tonight. But, you know, lawyers are paid by their word, Rick and I are here. But last year, our report was very, very positive, because as the economic conditions increased. And I trust they've had their first report from the state that came out?
Yes.
And last year, the one little small cloud over our tax collections was the state in its calculations of your collections, and seen fit to not award you the highest categorization of your collection of taxes that you're entitled to, on their financial integrity report, which is a rating of zero to five. And usually, you get five, the highest number, versus zero, the lowest number. And the reason is, they look at collections based upon a set of numbers dealing with levy in your actual collections. And some of those numbers were skewed because of circumstances beyond the district control. Pretty much primarily what it was, is they look at your orig, now, I'm going to get a little technical here, but they look at your original tax levy versus your collections. Your original tax levy is impacted on a almost daily, workday basis, because people come in and are eligible under state law to apply for late home set exemptions, price list corrections, that reduce your levy over the year. In a 12-month period of time, you'll reduce your levy. And the state uses the original levy in its calculations versus what we use as adjusted levy, which makes more sense. Now, there's a purpose to this story, if you hang in there. This year, the state recalculated it, because it's based on a rolling three-year average, and you were able to, you have to achieve 98 percent of your collections to get the five points. And this year, you achieved over 98 percent, as you traditionally have, and got your five points. And we start, but the other flip, there's a little silver lining to this, I'm actually getting someplace. If we started looking at those numbers, and in fact, in 2011 and 2012, you lost in each of those years, over half a million dollars in your levy, which is much larger than you normally do on an average basis, in a 12-month period of time. And so recently, earlier this year, we prepared an audit, we requested an audit of the district's tax levies for 2011 and 2012, and compiled all the data and documentation showing that the district's tax levy dropped, for 2011, $646,000, and for 2012, $566,000. And that led, that audit has been filed with the comptroller's office, and the process is that they're reviewing that, and frankly, because of their staffing issues, and where they're at at this time of the year, it's going to be delayed in getting that reviewed. We visited Ms. Davis about this. And so ideally, they are going to readjust your funding based on, and I'm not going to go too far down that road, is exactly how it's going to impact you, that's Ms. Davis's role. But they're going to readjust your, your school funding for those years, based upon the fact that you had a substantial value loss, well, value loss, levy loss, of over half a million dollars in each of those years, well over a million dollars those two years together. And those, they tell us that unfortunately, because of their staffing situation, they're not, it has to go from the comptroller's office, then they certify that to the Texas Education Agency. And that's unfortunately not going to take place much before the end of this year. We had hoped we filed it earlier this summer, that we'd have that underway by now, and I could report to you what, and Ms. Davis could know, the numbers, and how the actual numbers will flow to the district. But it's going to be delayed because of their staffing at the comptroller's office, but it will happen. And so you are supposed to be recouping a substantial portion of those dollars that you lost in those years. And to give you a comparison, again, those are half a million dollars, $646,000 one year, $566. This past year, 2013, your levy dropped $151,000, which is still a lot of money, but a small fraction of what you normally see because of normal changes in reductions in your levy because of tax rule corrections. So I just want to let you know that, that some of those things that came out last year, which we thought were sort of a black eye, because of what the state didn't give us the five, or give us a four versus a five, really sparked us to look back at those numbers, and maybe there's going to be really a good silver lining for the, for the district once all that's said and done. So I just wanted to report that to you. And again, we appreciate very much the opportunity.
You were almost cute, in how, because this is what folks understand, to put this in perspective. There's 75 total possible points, is that on the school?
Seventy.
Seventy. And every year, Ms. Davis and her department have gotten us the very highest possible rating, and almost always a perfect score. And last year, we got 69 out, instead of 70 points, because of the tax issue you're talking about.
That was our...
Nobody was unhappy. We all understood, it wasn't you, that our assessed values went down, and they measured it against the, and there was a big adjustment out there. And I think it's just, I'd say, almost cute, that a year later, you're still here, upset about it.
Still mad.
And still mad at them for knocking you that one point. We're not mad. But I do appreciate the fact that you, with the audit, you may get additional funds back in, showing that, that there was a significant reduce, reduction in our levy. And I do appreciate that effort. But we're really not upset about losing that. If we lose the one point, and get $1.1 million in return?
Yep, you'll be glad.
That's worth the one point, so I appreciate it.
Are you sure you speak for Shell?
He does.
Did you register that you're going to get her the star?
No, he does. I'd rather have some money.
We won't get her the star, but we may get her a million bucks.
Yeah. If he gets a million dollars in exchange for that one point, you're good.
You have another point next year.
Well, thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments from Mr. Meyer, Mr. Boswick?
Thank you.
Guys, as always, thank you, appreciate what you do. We really do appreciate the way you interact with the families, as you say, and understand, they really are our customers and our constituents, and we appreciate your efforts in doing that while still getting, getting the dollars.
Not if you usually get accustomed to your reports.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We've got monthly and quarterly financial reports left. The first one would be the year-end report for the period ending August 31, 2014. Ms. Davis, I know there's a written report, is there anything you wanted to add to that?
Well, the, there isn't, of course, very much on the September report, because again, it's the first report of the month, so I don't usually do much of a, I didn't do any much, any write-up, let's face it. But what you have for the August 31 report does include the athletic complex statement, and the cash and investments report. And I did some cleanup on that report, because I had to do it myself this time, so it took me a little bit longer. I'm not used to having to do that one. The, the general fund, food service, and debt service are very close to what I think the final numbers will be, particularly in food service and debt service. We do have still things coming in, of course, for the general fund, and I haven't quite finished the recalculation of state revenue, because I had to get all the tax information in first. But that's basically our ending financial position on the general fund in operations. We ended up in the black, about $2.5 million. And then we did sell a couple of properties, including the Bagby property, which brought in a little over $4 million. So you're going to see about a $6.5 million swing in our fund balance, hopefully by the time we finish up. And that's basically what we're using to fund the projects that we've got on the list tonight.
All right. Any questions on either item C or D, the August, the financial report for the period ending August 31, or for the period ending September 30? Thank you, Ms. Davis. Item 11, announcements, Dr. Kane?
Yes, sir. University High School JROTC Battalion participated in its first competition of the year last weekend at Sam Rayburn High School in Pasadena. The female Raider team won first place. Cadet Lily Mondragon won an individual first-place medal for the most sit-ups. Cadet Jamie Garcia won an individual second-place medal by performing 118 push-ups. The board wants to challenge any of these students, just let us know.
No, they can't.
In the competition. Garcia also won a third-place medal for overall physical fitness. And the University High School Physical Fitness Teams, both male and female, won third-place trophies. The district cross-country meet was held today in Flugerville. Waco High School had the first-place finishing girl runner in the varsity race. The Waco High Boys Varsity Team finished third place overall and qualified for the regional meet. The University High School Boys Varsity and Girls Varsity both finished second place and qualified for the regional meet. And the University Boys JV Team won district, and according to Coach Tusa, it wasn't even close.
Very good.
And finally, tonight, I'd like to urge runners throughout Central Texas to enter the Annual Turkey Trot 5K. Altrusa of the Brazos, organizer of the Annual Turkey Trot 1K and 5K races at Cameron Park, is donating a large portion of the proceeds of the proceeds this year's event to Waco ISD Homeless Outreach Service. Altrusa is encouraged by the work of Homeless Outreach Department, under the direction of Sheriff Puler, who was recognized earlier tonight. And we really do use those funds for a variety of ways. Sometimes we just help a student have a safe place to spend the night. Sometimes it's something like, it's their only prom, and we help buy tickets, and all the things that go with that. We bought rings. Usually, our, the ring company is good about giving them for cost, and, because we want to make certain that our homeless kids have a good high school experience, too. We buy clothes, we, just a lot of different things that we need the money for, to help those kids as we step into that parent row.
Any other announcements, or anyone on the board? All right, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
You know...
I'll pull the mic towards you, if you're going to drag the meeting out longer.
Thirty seconds.
All right, go.
Since we were talking about tax collections, it's been, something's been bothering me since earlier, and they're all still sitting over here, I want to sort of correct the record on something. I know you like being nice to us, and want to do well by us. It was not our generosity that got the behavioral intervention aids into those classrooms. I am so happy they're there, but we didn't pay for those. We're spending other people's money. Glad you got them, but I felt like you were giving us way too much credit for getting that done. That's all.
But you did your part.
Yes, okay. And thank you, and I don't, okay.
Thank you for your part.
Okay, that's it. I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Should have had that motion 30 seconds ago.
Yeah.
All those in favor say aye. We're adjourned.